Ready, Matt?
Good morning. Welcome to our March 9th Commissioners Meeting. We'll call the meeting order and start the call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
Amen.
Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure. Move to approve the minutes of March 2nd.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any changes, discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And we have a special guest with us today. So we're going to have Krista Wazowski from the Health Department come up. And we'll do this now, and that way you can go on and do have other things to do, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. I just want to stop in and give you an update today. We, as a county, are doing really well. Our cases are going down. Last week, we had 188 cases, which actually, it sounds like a lot, but actually, that is a reduction. And we've been reducing for the last eight weeks, our total number of cases. So, a great sign. And we're still, you know, we don't see the percent, the... We only get positive results. We don't see negative results locally. So I can't tell you what our positivity rate is. I know it's something we keep asking from the state. We don't have that information. But I can tell you that our testing is still very strong. I know there's a lot of testing happening. I just happened to talk with someone this weekend who happened to be positive, but they had to wait a day to get in for testing because all the testing slots were full. So I know that we're testing. So it isn't that people are just avoiding that to like have our numbers go down. That's not the case. So that's a good sign for us.
If I may...
Absolutely.
So is the data from all the testing going directly to the state? So it does not come down?
Right.
Or to you?
Yep. The negatives have always gone directly to the state. So those test results have always gone directly to them. The system that we have is a 20-year-old system, and it really, it could not bear the weight of all the negative results going into it while the positives were going in and all of us were trying to use it. So they said, they have a separate system that they set up at the state for that. So I never see those. We just have to take like our boots-on-the-ground knowledge and us talking to testing some locations and having a general understanding of what's happening to know what we're seeing. So, you know, that's very different than where we were in November and December. I mean, people were waiting days to try to get in for testing, and we're seeing a lot of positive results. So we know that things are looking better for us. We did have an additional case of the variant, a variant strain that was detected in the county. Again, we've not seen a lot of spread from the couple of cases that we've had. I know that's something the state is very vigilant about. But even with that, we're still, we're still moving forward and planning on us having a kind of a reopening of our county. So, but it's something that we are watching very carefully, and I wanted you to know that. Vaccination. Our vaccination numbers are very good. We are some of the highest in the state for our percentage of individuals over the age of 80. We are closely approaching that 75% mark of all of our 80-plus-year-olds being vaccinated in Medina County. Yeah, I'm really proud of that. The governor had us on a call, talking with other counties about what we've done, the strategies that we've used here, so that's a good thing. I think the state is, they're in the 60s still. They're really hoping to get closer to, they really want to see 75. So we're happy with that. But if you look at our percentages, we're actually below the state average, two age groups below that. Our folks who are 65 to 70, we just don't have a lot of people vaccinated in that group. So I wanted to let you know, tomorrow morning, we're going to be putting up several locations where people can schedule for the balance of this week and into next week for some clinics. The ones we put up tomorrow morning are going to be whoever's currently eligible as of today. So we'll put some, we'll put clinics up for that. And then the clinics that we put up later in the week, we'll have the expanded, the 50-plus, the additional people. We know there's a lot of people in that group. And there's a high demand for vaccine in all of our eligible groups, currently eligible and newly eligible as of Thursday. So we're going to kind of balance that out a little bit with the clinics that we have in the next two weeks. Some slots will be current, and then some slots we'll set aside and we'll have for everybody to be eligible. We use Armivax, and that app, I know we've had people asking a lot of questions when they see no slots available. The app is working. There are no slots available. So all the slots that we had set up last week for tomorrow are all filled. That's why the app says no slots available. But tomorrow morning, when we put up all the clinics for the next, for the balance of this week and a couple for next week, there'll be slots. And so they'll see, so they should see it. So if their app, if they have location services turned on, which you need to have that turned on at least until you make your appointment because it looks for, it looks for clinics in your vicinity. So it has to know where your phone is at. I know a lot of people don't turn on location services or don't let apps use it, and I understand that. Just turn it on while you're scheduling your appointment, and then you can turn it right back off again. It'll be fine. Your appointment won't be lost. It's in your, it's in the system for you. So we will be at six different locations, spread out throughout the county. We're really making an effort to make sure that we're putting ourselves in places that are convenient to the public to be able to get to if transportation's an issue, that don't have to travel too far. So last week, we did almost 2,000 back doses out of the Health Department. And that's the most vaccine the state has ever given to us. And this week, we got 1,100 doses, plus second doses. So that's the most we've ever had. So the more, you know, we've said, give us any quantity you want to give us, the more, the better. So we're ready for it. Our nurses are ready. We love serving the public. I'm sorry that people are frustrated. They, I wish they weren't frustrated at the Health Department because we have no control over the vaccine that we get. We accept every single dose. In fact, we drove down to Holmes County because Holmes had doses available. We drove down there and brought doses back to this county to be able to give last week. So we're doing everything to try to get as much as we can for this county. So with that, I just kind of wanted to give you an update. You know, today's the anniversary of the first case in Ohio. Of course, our first case in this county was on the 16th of March. But it's just been a long year. It's been a long year. And we, but we've all done it together. We really have. And I just, I just kind of want to give you an update and let you know how we're doing. And I'm excited about the fair. Really excited for us to have a full fair this year and to be together and to do some of the things that we're used to doing in the summertime. We're going to have, by the time we get to that point, we are going to have a lot of, a lot of individuals who want to be vaccinated are going to be vaccinated in this county, and I'm hoping for it really good.
We could have those at the fair.
Yes. Yeah, questions? I know we had a brief conversation yesterday on the phone, a number of us, regarding the real, I think, just as important numbers, the rest is the hospitalizations. And that has been trending down as well, has it not?
Yes.
Significantly.
Significantly, yes. Yes.
And then actually, that's one of the things I'm, I, as you pointed out yesterday, the importance of continuing to look at that. Because that's, that's really the, as you said, as you, you were talking about whether people are going to go ahead and not take the test, just go ahead and suffer through the symptoms, and if they're mild, not better, and they just isolate thing, and I don't need to take the test. They won't show up one way or the other. But the real number for us to be, in terms of the overall control of the pandemic, is the hospitalizations, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes. It shows effectiveness of vaccine. It shows strategies. Yes, absolutely. Yeah. That's the number that I key in more to, the total number of cases.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Got it.
So Krista, you're going to have six clinics coming?
Yes.
How do people access those clinics? Is it through Armivax?
Armivax is the best way. So, because, because with Armivax, individuals can see all that's available, and they can pick the time, and it'll say on there, this week, it's mostly Pfizer clinics this week. I think we may have some Modernas. They may just be second doses that we're, we're trying to pick up. If folks went to a pharmacy for a first and didn't get their second, we're trying to get vaccine to do just a broad, wherever you got your first dose, if you need a second dose of Moderna, come to us. So we're trying to secure some vaccine to be able to do that. But it'll say on there. We have a little bit of J&amp;J. We're out doing Homebound today. I have nurses all out, all throughout the county today, going to everybody who's on our Homebound list and doing vaccinations today with the Johnson product because it's a one-dose. Yeah, yeah. We have some additional Johnson that will have, will probably have that in a clinic, and it'll clearly mark and tell people a Johnson dose. So it's easier on Armivax because people can look at their own schedule and kind of make it, kind of like when you make a hair appointment. You're like, well, I could come this day, but I'd really rather come, you know? They can do it all themselves. But if individuals who can't, yes.
They need to have a smartphone or a computer?
A computer.
To, to, to download the application?
Right, right.
And then they go through and fill out the application? And then the Health Department will notify them through Armivax of what's available?
Yep. It'll just, it'll, it'll just show up, and they just click the clinic, and then they'll see all the available times that are, have open slots, and they can pick it. Yeah, yeah.
Now, now people, patients that go to the Clinton Clinic, and they use the MyChart?
They do.
They do that separately? They don't, it doesn't link into the?
No, it doesn't link into MyChart. So MyChart is kind of a separate process. Or if you're on a, if you're on a list from one of the pharmacies, that's a separate process. But for Health Departments, there are five Health Departments in our region who are all in Armivax. So you'll see any of their clinics. If you're up in Brunswick, you may see clinics that are in your zone. If you set it to like 40-mile radius, you'll see Cuyahoga if you're in the west. You may see Lorraine County clinics. You can go to whatever clinic is convenient that you want to go to. So, yeah.
Even Holmes County if they have vaccine, right?
Yes, yes. They have vaccine. Yeah, yeah.
So my other question is, from the Health Department standpoint, does the Health Department have any vaccine, could they, any excess vaccine? You're giving out everything that you're getting from the state, is my question.
Yes. We are, we are. Last week, at the end of the week, we had some carryover. We had set up a special clinic on Saturday, and we didn't have as many folks take those slots. We ended up having some of the Pfizer that we had acquired. We were able to substitute that in and do a Pfizer clinic in the afternoon since our nurses were there. We had a little bit of carryover last week, but our goal is to end the week with this amount of vaccine on the shelves, except for second doses. Because we get those on Thursday, and we have to carry those over because those clinics occur the following week. So I'm talking about first doses when I talk about carryover. Yeah, yeah. We want to get, everything we have, we want to get it out the door. That's our goal.
You said 75, roughly 70 to 75% of the 80-plus-year-olds in Medina County have the vaccine, correct?
Oh, yeah. We're at, we're at 74. I think last night, we were at 74.2%. Yeah, we're, we're really close to that 75% mark. Yeah.
So, given that not everybody is going to want it?
Yeah.
What, what does the Health Department consider to be fully vaccinated at that?
Yeah.
Do you have a figure for that or a feel for that?
Gosh, I mean, I, I would love to see 80% of our 80-year-olds, 80-plus. But there's a lot of decisions that go into that. And, and for some, they might not, they could be out of state maybe, and they may have gotten vaccinated out of state, and we don't know about that because it wasn't a dose given here in Ohio. So I'm kind of saying, we might be, we might be above that with it. Because our seniors, we have really active seniors in our county. So...
There are some of that age group that are still down in Florida. Hadn't returned back, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yet they're counted.
We're probably doing a little bit better. We're probably doing a little bit better. Yeah, yeah. No, you know, I think I've not really thought about that, actually, Commissioner, because I've really been focused on getting every dose we could and getting something out to everybody who wants it. I've not really thought about what that percentage is. We've not really looked at that. I think that 75% goal came about, the state had kind of said that was, that was what they were hoping to see, to be best protective. And that was kind of the estimate that they had been thinking, like, hmm, well, I think we can do that. And we can. So... So if individuals, if there are people, if you know folks who aren't tech-savvy, certainly someone can go on the internet and help them sign up. They can absolutely do that. They can still give us a call if they don't have access and they don't, and they're not sure. We have step-by-step guides. We have a video tutorial. There's a lot of, there's a lot that we have on our website.
So how would they access those resources?
Yep. MedinaHealth.org/vaccine. And that will get them to all that information. You can always call us. I don't want anybody to feel frustrated. All right. Thank you. Good. Okay.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you very much. Yep. Have a great afternoon.
You, too. Okay, we will move on to our resolutions. First up, we have Amy Lyon-Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have eight resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is revenue adjustments for various funds. The fourth is cash transfers for various funds. The fifth resolution is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County print shop revenue line item. The sixth resolution is authorizing a contract for professional services of a beautician for the Medina County home. We've got a new beautician. Her name's Sandy Miller. And this is from March 1st of '21 through December 31st of '21 at a rate of $250 per month. The seventh resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. This is for one member of the recorder's office to attend a conference in Columbus. And the eighth resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $1,247,810.81.
Move to approve the eight resolutions?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up, we have Holly Mura, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution, which is my update today, we have three new hires, one at sanitary, two in maintenance, twelve grade increases, five at job and family services, one in maintenance, four in sanitary, one at Office for Older Adults, and one in transit, three fund corrections at Office for Older Adults, and two leave of absence, one in sanitary, and one at Office for Older Adults.
Move to approve the resolution?
And one return from leave of absence, right?
No, and one at the bottom. Yep.
It was on the?
Yep, that's on the bottom, but still, yeah.
Second.
Hi. We've got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Four resolutions for you today. First is authorizing an adjusting change order, number one, for the Sharon Township Water and Sanitary Improvement Project. The second is a resolution authorizing a one-year extension of the contract for the hauling and disposal of cake biosolids, DAF float, and hauling of liquid waste-activated sludge. The third is the final resolution to proceed with the proposed State Route 18 improvement project with ODOT. And the fourth is the final resolution to proceed with the proposed State Route 162, Route 3 Roundabout improvement with ODOT.
All right. Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? It's going to be a busy summer.
It is extremely busy.
So, so we have these two, Route 18 and Route 3. They're going to be under construction. We're going to have a courthouse that's under construction. And the city is going to have the project over on Washington, or Liberty Street, under construction.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
It'll be an interesting summer here in Medina. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Okay, so the Commissioners have a couple of resolutions here. The first one is to approve the petition for annexation of 3.2569 acres of land, known as being part of Wadsworth Township to the City of Wadsworth. The second resolution is to appoint a representative to the Medina County Planning Commission, which is the Township Association representative, and the person identified is Chris Colina. And the last resolution is to appoint a person to the Medina County Improvement Board, Community Improvement Board. Quentin Tiff has resigned, and Carol Carter is to be appointed.
Move to approve all three resolutions?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I guess, pointing out that this is an expedited type 1 and does not require a hearing or anything, just to make it clear for the audience, which is unusual for, this is one of those special cases where everybody agrees and...
Who's for it? It's a done deal.
Yes, done deal. Yep.
I want to thank Quentin Tiff for his service. He's done a lot of boards for us and...
I actually think he's been on it since it started.
Right.
Close to, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to our department updates. And first off, we have Laura Toth from the Office for Older Adults.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've had another productive month at Office for Older Adults, and we keep delivering meals to seniors in their homes. Our average number of clients still, service still hovers around 250. In February, we delivered 5,060 meals, up from 5,035. An update on taxes. Literally, when I walked out of this meeting last month, I got back to my office, and my program manager came in and said, "AARP is not doing taxes." I'm like, "You're kidding me." So as, as most of you, I hope, know, the AARP decided not to fulfill their tax appointments in Medina County this year. This left our office with over 900 people to contact and inform that of other possible options. So we gathered our volunteers and our ADRC department and the Supremo Center in Wadsworth and began contacting the waitlist of clients. It was then suggested, funny enough, by Krista Wazowski. She's like, "You should call Christine and see if you could use their reverse call system." So they were able to populate a group to receive a message. So we were able to send out, on, I think, last Friday, two Fridays ago, sent out a message to everybody that was on our waitlist saying that AARP is not doing taxes. We will contact you, or if you need further assistance, you can, of course, contact our office. So I just wanted to send a shout-out to Christine and Matt at Emergency Management who helped make that happen for us. That was a really good connection for us and said that we could use that in the future. So possibly, if there's a weather emergency and we can't deliver something, we'd be able to populate numbers of, of clients or have clients on, in the system already that we could say, we're not going to deliver, you know, something like that. So I thought that was a really good connection to make.
So Laura, is there any alternative that you have?
There are. Community Action has some free tax openings. Of course, they're, they're filling up if not full. And then we also have some low-cost accountants that give senior discounts and things like that. I think a lot of people might be, I mean, a lot of these are very simple tax returns. A lot of people reaching out to people they know to maybe do a TurboTax action or something like that. But we'll see.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate they were given such a short notice that they weren't, and I guess AARP in the past had been somewhat reliable, certainly, in many expectations that that's who would do their taxes. And so unfortunately, with that short notice, they're all scrambling.
People in a bind. Absolutely agree. We received several significant donations this month. I wanted to go over the Medina County Senior Adult Foundation, purchased three heavy-duty kitchen carts for us, total of over $500 apiece, two additional rolling carts that the drivers take on deliveries, and an additional 12 freeze packs to keep them out cold on routes, and then 100 KN95 masks. So we'll come through with that donation. On Friday, February 19th, we held a staff meeting to just retrain, go over with staff how to properly wear and dispose of masks. We made a decision to switch to KN95 masks as they're more available and safer for people to use, putting our staff at less risk and the seniors that we deliver to at less risk. And those would be changed out once per week. KN95 masks are not cheap, but they're safe and effective. And then we got from Western Reserve Masonic Community, they stepped up to help us. They gave us 600 KN95 masks to use that will last a long time. So that was, that was very good news. Tomorrow is the start of our community meal program. The response has been fabulous, and we plan to provide over 60 meals. People have signed up through our office, and we have a drive-through operation. The program, which we call Claudia's Curbside Cuisine, Claudia's our cook, and a lot of seniors know her, continues with tomorrow, and then our next event is on March 31st. Senior Day is scheduled for Tuesday, May 18th. I'm so excited. That is just great news. We will have a Senior Day this year. We are, the fairground, the Fair Board approved our use of the fairgrounds and their facilities. The parking lot for the day, we're going to do a drive-through operation, kind of like a drive-through health fair, where we will be the last stop and give a box lunch. So a lot of the aspects of Senior Day will be there. We're just still in the planning stages. I'll continue to report on that. I'm just really excited that the Fair Board has supported our efforts and that we're going to be able to have some kind of an event this year with the hopes in 2022 to have that full-scale, big event. So it is something to look forward to.
So Laura, this is not going to be an inside?
It will not be an inside.
Just a drive-through, just a drive-through.
Yeah. Finally, I'm happy to report that we've begun planning for the reopening of the Senior Center in Medina and senior activities in Brunswick. Can I do advance this? Let's agree. Our tentative reopening date is Monday, April 12th. This would not be possible without the help of Avenue at Medina, which is a skilled nursing, short-term rehab right here in Medina. They came forward and said, "We will test your staff. We will come to your office. We'll test your staff and any seniors that you have identified." That is, I just can't overstate how huge that is because that was, has been our big stumbling block for the past six months. We have formed a reopening committee, and we meet weekly. I'm planning on attending a discussion session, probably on the 23rd, to go over step-by-step what we will do. I will continue to make these plans. I know there's a lot of talk of when all these orders will be lifted, and they may be lifted by April 12th, but we will continue to go forward in planning for that reopening and, and to be in compliance with the ODH order that's currently in place.
Krista, thank you. Very good.
Thank you so much.
And so you're going to come back before April 12th, right?
Yes, I will be, I will come back on the 23rd for discussion and just go over what exactly we're going to do. And then I will also, I think my regular report will be like April 13th. Okay?
Good, very good, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura. Have a great day. Next up, we have Stephen Bastine, our Facilities Director. Good morning, Stephen.
Hello, sir.
Good morning.
How is everybody this morning?
Good, good.
So, as an update for us, our workload has been down a little bit from last year from a work order standpoint throughout the county. We're at 796 for the year. That's down from 961. We kind of assume that. We're trying to do a little bit different. Jobs throughout the county to reduce the number of work orders just so we actually are tracking good data and not just producing work orders for loading tasks, but producing tasks. The timeline on each one of those is about an hour. So our workload, although the work orders have reduced, our time for the order has increased by about an hour. Vehicle maintenance-wise, we've done 87 vehicles so far this year, which is about identical to the same as last year. Our garage isn't going to be able to handle much more than that as we have a mechanic out there, and Mike who helps out with the maintenance. From a cleaning aspect, our supervisor for there, Angie, has introduced iAuditor, which we have picked up on. It's just an app on a phone. It's just an app on a phone, allows her to go through and actually audit all of the building's cleanliness. So she has just started that as of this week. She's doing a really great job with that piece. That'll allow her to see her cleaning technician's standpoint of what they're cleaning and what we can get better at and what we can obviously, what we're doing well, so keep doing the things we're doing well. And it's an electronic app that just captures all of that data instantaneously. She just goes through, she's created a checklist inside of there and she goes through and it's either a yes or no answer and asks questions as it goes through and we set that all up ourselves. So she's, goes through and does that for every building. So it'll be interesting to see the results coming out from the end of this year, so.
I would tell you the feedback that I've gotten from folks that are in the buildings is very good.
Good.
I mean, they appreciate the fact that the buildings are clean and taken care of, so.
Very good.
Kudos to the cleaning staff.
Thank you. It's been a struggle with the staffing and I'll get to that a little bit. I think we've been down a few people, but again, she's managing it very well and the people we do have have been doing fantastic job. So it's great hearing the positive feedback. From a capital proven standpoint this year, Highway Engineer has been helping us out with the parking lots and getting them scheduled and figured out. So they've actually done some big, so kudos to Dan Becker over there, Andy, for allowing Dan to help us with that. But we're looking at the Human Service Center parking lot, we're looking at the jail parking lot. We have a meeting tomorrow with the sheriff. We're going to go out there and discuss his parking lot needs and what we're going to end up doing there. And then if there's funding left over from those two positions or from those two jobs, we're going to be looking at a chiller upgrade at the jail, which is a very, very expensive piece. There's a concern that we have a single chiller out there, which is what gives them all of their air conditioning. If that unit goes down, we do not have a backup, we don't have a way to back it up. So we're looking at options into making sure we don't have a catastrophe where it just stops working and then us have to off-site all of our...
Is that the original chiller?
It is, it is. And we do a really good job with maintaining.
Was it like 94, 95?
95.
95, okay.
95. We actually pay a service, we have a company come out and service it twice a year and they do a really, really good job with it. So it's in great shape. We just don't want that catastrophic failure to happen and us really be in a pickle.
Twenty-five years has actually passed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is. I'm an evangelist.
As is most of our equipment.
Yeah, indeed.
So let's get to the pieces that we can get to first. From a project standpoint, the courthouse, obviously you guys knew about the water damage. That project is still going, so Law Library is, the walls are back up in the Law Library. They will be painting, I do believe later this week or early next week, ceiling tile will be going in there. And then once we are done with that location, we'll go to probate, work on a couple of bathrooms that we have up there and take care of any issues from that standpoint. Until we open up the walls, we really don't know what we're going to be getting into in that location, but we already have a plan to get into that. We'll be moving the courthouse security entrance. We've got a contractor coming in and putting in electrical for us for the front door and then as well as, we also have contacted a couple of contractors about putting in by door openings for the front of the courthouse. And then I have a meeting later today.
So for handicap ADA access?
ADA compliance, yeah. So we'll have those doors hopefully installed by either the end of this month or early next month. And then I have a meeting with the architect later today going over the ramp for the front of the courthouse. I don't know if you guys are aware, but we're in the recorders' office now, moving the recorders and compacting them down. That move is going well.
I was there yesterday. It's amazing how much you guys have done so far.
We ran into a couple of issues. We opened up a drywall wall thinking it was pretty, a thin wall. We didn't think anything of it and come to find out there was a six-inch block wall inside of that with windows and doors and...
Hmm.
It's always fun opening up things. We even found a sign, an old, it looks like an old shop sign in there that just says that, "Keep the guards posted" and it's great, so I'll have to bring that out at some point in time. So once that's done, we'll start moving into tax maps, which is the second half of the recorders' area. We'll build that tax maps area out, get tax maps moved, and then we'll probably bring in a contractor to do tax maps all at once and get that prepared for economic growth. That's still a little bit out, so I'm not too sure on the firm dates on any of that, but that'll be the next move. Our admin shop, the shop that used to be at this building has now officially been moved out. I think we have one table left removed and we're now at our new location. And obviously, it's all just boxes sitting on our floor right now, but that's being done. I know the animal shelter has to have, he needs an office built out, so we'll be building that office out here in the next couple of weeks as soon as we break free of a couple of these other projects that we've got going. And then we've got all the cat runs for, so the sheriff's got new body cameras coming in, so all of the meets, cat lines and power lines for all of their docking stations and antennas on the jail, so that will be happening as well to make sure that they stay on track with their timeline of getting those installed. Those are our projects right now. From a staffing standpoint, we are a person short in our maintenance department, so I'll probably be hiring somebody soon for that. It's been a difficult, we're being down a person, so we'll get somebody in place and hopefully help out with some of the workload on that. We have been down two, three people in our cleaning department. We just brought on two people yesterday for cleaning and hopefully we can get another person on and then get back to carpet cleaning, which has been falling behind since when we lose somebody, we just pull that carpet cleaner back off and put them in the building to keep the buildings clean. We'll get back to carpet cleaning and floor cleaning as soon as we can. And with that, Laura Toth has just put in a new dining room floor in her area, so that will no longer need to be waxed or anything. All we have to do is clean it, which is great from a utility standpoint. It's just easy. We don't have to worry about waxing and stripping and all of that, so that's really, really great. Vehicle Maintenance is still holding with its staff, just a single person out there. He's done a great job. He will be sorely lost when we do finally lose him, hopefully many, many years from now, so. From vehicle maintenance, we had a four-post lift installed. We've had the two-post lift installed earlier last year. And with Shannon's help out from Transit, he contacted, somebody from Brunswick had contacted him, they're actually giving us a four-post lift. So we've purchased one and they're going to give it to us and we're just paying for the move, so hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have that four-post lift also installed.
Who's donating?
Brunswick. You'd have to ask him then.
It used to be... It'd be the old Transit garage here.
Old Transit garage. It's the sheriff or the police office uses it now.
Right.
I think they have their vehicles stored in there now, so we're pulling that one out. It's a little bit older than the lift, but it's a good four-post lift and it'll match ours as an old one now.
Yes, it's right across the, well, right across from the police station, but also right behind the emergency room southwest. That's the old Transit.
That is correct.
Built back in the 90s if I remember correctly.
Okay.
With a, with a federal grant.
Yes, yeah. He did say it was for a federal grant with for Transit, so again, I think he wanted to keep it with the Transit and that'll help us with our Transit. As Transits come in, it'll just give us some other lift or a possible lift to, you know, if we have a vehicle come in and it needs service and it's more than just a service and we didn't recognize, you know, a wheel bearing's gone, it'll stay along the lift while we get it fixed, so it gives us some versatility in it. And with that, utility bills, Brandy has taken over, so the utility bill bank, hopefully that allows us to be a little bit more active in how much it's costing for utility bills and gives me a better look at what we are spending and if we have abilities to save energy costs. So she's just taken over for that. Hopefully we can start getting some reports and actually show what we're spending in utilities and try to understand, hey, do we have problems here? Do we have problems there? Laura Law back from the finance office, a month ago, sent out an email to us saying, "Hey, you've spent, the utility bill's almost double in this tower location. We don't normally pay that bill." But it's nice for us to hear that, go to find out that somebody had gone into that building, turned up the heating unit and the air conditioner was off the lawn. So we were heating and cooling that space all at the same time for an entire month. So it's nice seeing that because if we don't hear it, then it just continues to go and go and go until we get back out to that location and actually service it, so it's nice knowing and seeing it. So with that, I don't have much more to offer any questions.
Do we have any energy upgrades that we're going to do, like LED lights or any?
As we go through and do these spaces, so all projects that we're on, like the Law Library, this location, all of the lighting is being pulled as we go through and putting in LED lights as we go through. We are not replacing the CFL, so if any building has like a CFL fixture and that fixture was bad and we do not have a light bulb for it, we will be putting in LED lights, so as a replacement. So as we continue to, it doesn't make sense for us to change out ballast and light bulbs and all of that when we can go to an LED light for $5 more than the actual, what it was costing us for the ballast and light bulbs. So we're just going to switch them out as we go. Now sometimes we'll do an entire room instead of just a light or two, so yeah, we're doing it as we go through and any project we do, we are putting in LED lights.
Excellent. Good job. Thank you, Stephen.
Very good.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our discussion session. Scott, you want to go first?
I just wanted to give you a quick update. As Stephen said, we're looking at the ramp for the front of the courthouse and the electronic doors. We will be making that the front entrance or the entrance to the courthouse probably late April, early May. They will be fencing off the parking lot where we get started with the staging areas and prepping for the groundwork, which will probably begin sometime in May or June. So I also want to let you know that the official statement's completed. It's been sent to standard accords. We are trying to schedule a rating meeting this week. If we get the meeting completed this week, we will be issuing the bonds probably the week of the 22nd. So, and even if we get the rating meeting sometime, well, if it doesn't occur this week and we do it next week, we'll still issue bonds the week of the 22nd unless it's towards the end of next week. So we're moving forward. Branson and Carroll, they are in the construction document phase, so they have started that. We have met with the technology design firm. We are moving forward with that. We've already talked about access controls, camera systems. AV will be next, so we, and I think we're going to be scheduling a tour of the Seneca courthouse where court personnel will be able to go and look at what Seneca is doing with their technology. They were recommended to us, I think they just completed their courthouse back in 2018, so they have some of the newest technology. So we are moving forward. I'm excited we'll be issuing $32 million in debt for the courthouse, but you know, our revenues, our revenues are up approximately $900,000 a year to date. So some of that is due to some monies that were transferred last year that were to be transferred to the general fund. Our cash balance is about $1.4 million up from last year. So we're doing well. Sales tax continues to increase. Property taxes, I expect to increase some also. I think those will be posted this month or next, so we're in good shape.
Excellent. And you also did, I meant to ask Stephen this, but an air quality study at the courthouse, the old courthouse.
Yes.
Correct? Everything was good?
Yeah, we were concerned because with the water leak, we tore down, we tore out the walls of the Law Library and some black mold had developed, so we wanted to check the courthouse just to make sure that the air quality was good. And it came back, it came back good, so we're good with it.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else, Scott? Are you good?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, Scott. Jeremy?
Hey, I got, in our discussion from last week, you had asked about the electrical usage at Liverpool with our new digester project there. So I got...
Thank you.
...the electrical usage of the since 2016.
Very good, thank you.
I see you have taken the lead of your mentor, Ms. Lyons, golfing on these massive spreadsheets.
Color-coded.
Yeah, good.
Learn from the best, right?
She backed it, I don't know if she heard that or not, but...
Makes it easier to read.
So just to want to show you that our...
Significant.
Yeah, if you look at 2016, the average kilowatt used per day was about 33,140. And if you look at 2020, it was 11,640, so about a, you know, a 66% reduction. I would say we should try and concentrate more on that usage with the, you know, obviously the costs have come down about $660,000, $670,000 a year in savings on that, but with the fluctuations of energy cost, it's kind of hard to correlate the usage to the cost, but yeah, it's definitely a very significant savings here.
I guess how does flow or treatment volume compare between the years?
I...
I'm just asking, I'm just, yeah.
Obviously, as development has occurred over the last year, so flow has increased a little bit, but we've also, you know, done some, a lot of rehab, which has eliminated some of that.
Right, right, yeah.
I would say if I had to take a stab at it, we probably added maybe 500,000 gallons a day or something like that over the...
Would we increase so that actually would be more efficient? Normally, if we hadn't made these changes, it would have actually been even more, correct? So I guess that's my question is...
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's a fair statement, so.
Yeah, because basically, a lot of pumping, a lot of...
Yeah, and especially with the wet weather, you know, you get a lot more wet weather in there, you know, the infiltration, you have to put those extra blowers on, so it does increase the, you know, a lot of extra pumps are starting to...
So it's more than just a static number.
Exactly.
And I think that's the important point here is that would have gone actually up.
I had a township ask me about the savings. When you get back to your office, can you email me this?
I can do that.
Thank you.
And I also want to let you know that on the, since it's a, you know, we blend natural gas with the biogas that's created. And I talked with Dawn Taylor over at, over at the plant. She says it's about a 70, 30% mix, so 70% biogas, 30% natural gas. So our natural gas, even though we're blending it with natural gas to power the generators, the increase in the natural gas, there was no real increase because the old Zimpro process used the natural gas.
That's right.
So really, that's, that energy's cost has relatively remained the same, so.
Was there some sort of anomaly in November of 17?
Yeah, I saw that where they didn't have, I don't know if they couldn't find the bill for it or what the issue was there, but that was, or they found the bill, but they had an issue with it.
It was a freebie.
Yeah. That'd be pretty nice.
An estimate.
So, yeah, we'll definitely send that over to you.
Thank you.
And then the other last thing, I actually had a conversation with OWDA regarding House Bill, I think it was 264, regarding the refinancing.
The financing, yeah.
So OWDA stated that you cannot refinance an existing OWDA loan. If you had a, if you took loans out from somewhere else...
Yeah.
You could refinance those loans with OWDA, but OWDA was not going to refinance their...
Its own portfolio.
Exactly.
Serious, oh, okay. Not exactly that was explained to the legislature when we were looking at the significant savings.
Yeah, so I was on the phone with them yesterday.
Yeah.
Did I mention?
In other words, they don't want to reduce the return, yeah, the percentage they're charging for their loans as opposed to the...
Other people's loans.
Got it, yeah, understand, okay.
All right. Well, the OWDA usually floats a lot of its own funds out there.
I know, yes, oh, yeah.
But yeah, it would seem that they would want to refinance their own stuff.
Yes, so they might have exaggerated a little bit when it went to the legislature. Understand.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jeremy. Denise, anything? Brian, anything? John Mayer, Steve?
Nope, don't have anything, thanks.
Yeah, we held our McDAC meeting yesterday and the grant applications for this year will be due the first week in May, so the next meeting will be May 10th. So the due date will be before the next meeting so that they can evaluate the grants that come in for this year's monies towards McDAC. Second, since the fair, Krista mentioned, the fair is in full swing. Last year, we had decided to have a commissioner's booth, which we obviously did not have, and I just want to make sure that I can instruct Brian to move forward with...
I'm good with that.
I agree, oh, yeah.
Okay, and we had...
Certainly.
We'll make a new commissioners. We got that very reasonably, I think it was like $200, the commissioner poster for the booth. I will take care of that if you guys are all good with that.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
That's it.
I've got a couple of things. Number one, we got our annual report from Judge McElane from Lockwood.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I just wanted to acknowledge receipt of that. He does a great job over in Lockwood. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and Scott, I'm going to put you on the spot on this. I saw a few emails floating back and forth on House Bill 801 on radios. Would you maybe talk a little bit about that? So the last email that I saw was from Representative Wright.
That's right. She's talked to the sponsor of that bill from last GA.
And indicating that if the state, since this is sort of a state mandate, it appears that we transitioned to the Marx system in what they were saying, five years.
Five years, yes.
That the state should pay for the upgrades to the Marx system.
Well, and it's not just the upgrades. It's what, I think $2 million that we spent to buy our, the system we have. So it's a double loss.
We owe what, like a million and a half on those funds?
Yeah, so we've got over $2 million in our current system and we're currently in the process of moving equipment at Ranch Road. And we're also looking to put a tower up in Hinckley. So we're putting an additional, about $400,000 into the system. And as I understand it, it's working well. I think, you know, our sheriff's office and I think the city of Dan is using it, I think they're both very, very happy with it. But this bill would require us to go to Marx. You know, back in 2000, I think it was 14, we did the request for proposals, you know, Marx did a, submitted a proposal and they did not meet the bid requirements or they did not meet the other requirements in the proposal. It would have, per their proposal, it would have required the fire stations to go to the, to a 700 system. And they currently had a 400 system. They would have had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to move. The Marx had a $20 a month fee on the radios. We would have had to put, I think, $3 million into towers around the county to have coverage. So the system that we went with was one that we were able to tailor to us at a much slower cost. My understanding is that the state is looking to take the non-hold monies and to use those monies to fund the radio system around the state, which means the county also loses about $350,000.
I know, we lose in many ways on this.
So we're currently paying, we're still paying debt on the radio system. We have already invested over $2 million into the system and we're investing more. And then we're losing $350,000 in revenue with this.
This, part of this conversation, we had the CCIO, our Public Safety and Justice Committee, last Friday, and this did come up, would point out to add to this, under the current budget, they eliminated the state subsidy for those monthly subscriptions, those $20 a month. State was actually paying a portion of that. And, no, yeah, and actually the governor's budget removes that entirely as well as Marx is increasing their rate beyond that, that $20 per month. So there's been a lot of discussion, the state's moving away from GFR support and it sounds like maybe the game plan is to start raiding the other sources of funds to fund the system. And they're very distressing for those that have already made major investments.
For me, it's creating another monopoly in Ohio for one company. And the last time Ohio created a monopoly for one company, it was First Energy. And, and look how that has turned out with House Bill 6. So I mean, now we're going to statewide create another monopoly for a company. I just, I believe that around the state, individual government entities should be able to make choice when they're going out into the private sector.
I agree. So is this something that the CCIO is going to?
Well, we'll be discussing it. It has not been, 801 is the old bill number from last GA. So there'll be, it'll be reintroduced, I believe. We'll be following it. Commissioner Ray actually has been actively in discussions and I think we'll have to follow that very, once it's introduced and gives a number and a committee, it's given over to a committee, we'll certainly have to jump in on that. It sounds like the action's going to be on the House side, not on the Senate side. So I think that's what we'll have.
And even if they say, oh, you know, you can amortize these monies for the new system, well, what about the 2.4 million we already spent on the system we have? They're not going to amortize that for.
We're not the only ones. There are 10, 10 communities, I believe, or 10.
I think there's like, yeah, I think there's eight.
Eight, okay. All right. And, but there's a number of it that are in the same boat. And I think that's what we're going to have to come in and find way, find some way to get grandfathered in and make sure that we're not paying the cost.
So I guess my concern is whether CCIO will actually take it into a.
A formal position?
I hope so. Because most of the counties are already on Marx.
Right, yeah, but the shift in funding is of great concern.
Well, that aspect is.
Yes, yeah.
And do they have a concern with another monopoly in Ohio?
I don't, that wasn't discussed. As you point out, many of the public, we'll just say the public safety entities are pushing for this. And then obviously the municipalities have a different viewpoint than the commissioners.
Well, the fire departments in Medina County, I think last year, you were able to have $50,000 grant for each fire department.
Right.
To go to Marx. So, you know, Marx is making inroads.
And if you. And, and if you want to make the choice for Marx, that's great. Many people are very, very happy and, but my point is you're taking the choice away from government entities.
If you've also followed that you've got one section of the state was a clear mine? I'm trying to remember what it was. It was along, I think it was southeast part of the state where the lieutenant governor was heading an initiative to do broadband expansion and combined with Marx. They were using Marx towers as part of their broadband expansion. So there's been some discussion in this underserved area to actually take that monopoly, that entity, and also fold it into the administration's push for broadband expansion, which is kind of an interesting twist. They, I mean, even towers require fiber, you know, fiber for connection.
Right.
And so they were looking to do that. So I think that's what some of the movement you're going to see is taking some of, certainly the federal money that's coming and whatever the state puts in, takes the broadband money and put it into essentially expanding the influence of Marx system, which is not necessarily beneficial to Medina County.
Again.
And just to clarify, that the $20 per month fee, is $20 per month per radio?
Per radio.
Per radio.
Per radio.
Hundreds and hundreds of radios, including Medina City Schools has radios.
That's right.
And all the schools have radios. And so you're talking about a lot.
Are all the schools on the same system?
I think that most of them are.
Yeah. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
I just don't believe in taking choice away.
Well, when the state was subsidizing half of it.
Well, I mean, if the state wants to come in and pay for the whole thing and convert us over.
We may be arguing like Inogen Defense.
Yeah, I'm not that.
Give us 90%.
I'm not that concerned.
But this is an unfunded mandate.
Agreed.
That's exactly what it is.
Backdoor.
Okay, so enough on that. But Scott, if you would just keep us surprised if we need to go down and even testify if the bill was.
Okay, well.
I believe Scott has already sent a letter to State Representative Wright and Kik.
Yeah, and actually Representative Ray asked us, if someone would be willing to come down and testify.
Right, right.
So the answer is yes.
Yes.
All right. Don't move.
Okay. So we got a little blurb from the CCIO on the American Rescue Plan and, which is supposed to be passed, I think, today by the House, US House. And from what I heard, President Biden will be signing it very quickly. And I understand that there's over $2 billion that's going to be allocated to local counties. And so we are going to get, I've heard figures as high as.
Four million.
$4 million allocated to Medina County and we're supposed to get the first half of it like in less than 60 days.
I didn't see anything, though. Are they going to be giving us those stringent time limits that we had last year, though?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
Actually, three years.
So it gives us much more flexibility and much more time.
Right, and we get half of it this year, half of it next year.
Last year, those time restrictions made a lot of things very difficult.
But, but there is a number of different.
Pots.
Yeah, areas that we can use the money across the country, including broadband extension, water and sewer investments, and assistance to small business. So I think we need to start thinking about what we're going to do when it becomes available, how we're going to invest it.
One of the items.
One of the things, I know I've been thinking about this, and I talked to a company last week and they get the ability to come in and to set up basically conference rooms with, to make it easy to telecommute. They have an easy button. Press the easy button and you've got the speakers, the cameras, the cameras, the focus, face recognition, and then they'll broaden as more people are in there. I'm actually talking to them about doing our conference room and possibly the conference room upstairs and test it out. Once I know, once I see how it works, I'd like to do the conference rooms at the engineering center and actually all the conference rooms. Which, which would be, you know, it'd be nice because we're coming into the 21st century. The other thing that I thought of is at the jail, I know that prior to COVID, we were maxing out at, you know, we have like 256 capacity. We were at over 300 at times. We had to send inmates about to other counties. So the thought there is if I'm able to use the money to do some jail expansion, I think that would be beneficial because you don't want, you know, if you've got a pod that holds 50 people, you don't want to put 75 people in that pod, so.
Well, and it doesn't appear that these monies come with, I mean, there was very specific rules last year about COVID expenses, revenue loss from COVID. It appears that these monies are not all for COVID expenses.
There's some broad categories there.
Right, very broad categories.
So, so a couple of the categories are essential workers and pay for essential workers and assistance to household and small business nonprofits due to the health emergency. But one of them that is, I mean, it says specifically make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure.
Right.
Which is huge.
Do they have to be related to?
Steve, from what I read here, it does not appear.
I didn't see that, yeah.
Because most of our departments are up and running with COVID expenses, correct? Shields and, you know, setting up offices in ways that are more safe.
Are these going to be direct to us or will they go through the state like last time?
No, we apply directly to the treasury.
To the federal?
Yes, to the US Treasury.
US Treasury. So therefore we don't have to go through, okay, yeah, JCAR or any of the, or, yeah, those other, those guidelines, okay.
There are going to be distributions to cities and with populations over 50,000 and to smaller cities, their distribution will come through the state.
Got it, okay.
So for example, the grounds of water from Medina will go through the state to get whatever distribution they're allowing. But one of the other things that it says is allows county transfers to fund nonprofit organizations. And then another item is special purpose units of state or local government. I don't know exactly what that means, a special purpose unit, but maybe that is a jail.
Special purpose units.
So anyhow, I just, you know, in 60 days, we may end up with.
A library or DD is a special unit to, or general government?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'm just thinking of all the various, yeah.
It'll be interesting as more information comes out.
Yeah. I got, my question, and actually maybe I should have brought, when Steve was here, my thoughts when he was talking about the chiller and upgrade there, the, basically the HVAC and the system within the jail, whether upgrading it to, and I know at the state level, because of COVID, they end up upgrading the ventilation system to meet the higher standards you need for infectious disease. And so my question is, is whether we could theoretically be able to justify, leverage that to pay for that upgrades we need in the jail? Since it's where it's that expensive, especially if it entails a purificate, a system for making sure that you don't have that infectious disease spread.
Yeah, we should be able to. I know with the last round of COVID, we actually did some work with this building.
Right.
With the system, ventilation system. So I would think that we'd be able to do that at the jail.
Would that apply to new construction? Just asking.
Like the courthouse?
I'm just asking. Yeah, well, I mean, we happen to have across the street, something going to go in. I'm just wondering.
Yeah. So I guess my, my thought is, though, is that we should start having and formulating a plan.
Agreed, agreed.
So that when the money's available.
Well, obviously we have to evaluate what the needs are and have a better understanding, especially from the county level.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's all I have? Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
I would like to thank the city of Medina and Matt and Jared in particular.
Oh, yeah.
For all of this. This is, this is new.
And they did it so quickly.
They did. And, and we are partnering with the city of Medina to video and distribute our meetings live. So we appreciate it very much.
And thank you for this, Jeremy.
I did, I did want to point out that there is going to be a, now, is the meeting on the levy regarding the advisory? Is that a public meeting?
It is a public meeting. You can zoom into it.
Okay.
You email Rhonda and she will send you the Zoom request.
There are going to be discussions about the potential levy because it is coming up and I think that that's going to be important for those that might have any concerns about the county home.
Their renewal is up.
Renewal, that's right. Well, that has to be decided as to what it needs to be. But it's going to be ending and so it's important, I think, that the public know that the advisory committee is meeting Wednesday.
At 5:30.
At 5:30 and they can go in and register to be able to watch it and participate. All right.
Very good. They have motion to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great week.